Call this October 7th Jackson County Commission Work Session to order. Have our roll call. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Guthrie.
President.
Mr. Two, Mr. Beadle.
President.
Mr. Three, Mr. Miller.
President.
And Mr. Four, Mr. Leffler.
President.
Have a quorum present tonight. Have our inification by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Guthrie.
Lord God, our Father, we are before you tonight to do the business of the county, to see about the people of this county and the things that will improve their lives and to manage the resources provided here. Now, we thank you for the blessings. We thank you for the individual blessings we each have, and we thank you for the blessings that we have as a community. Now, we know that there are troubled times in this world, and we pray that you'll be with everyone and keep everybody safe, especially those of our nation that are in the armed services. We pray that they will come home safely, that they'll do a good job, protect us, keep our freedoms safe. And always, God, we pray for your blessing. Continue to watch over us, help us, and save us every day, in Christ's name.
Amen. We believe in the justice of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is an approval of the agenda that he handed to the head of the board for proceeding. We've had a request to put item on nonpartisan elections on the agenda. If we could add that as item number three. And I also like to ask that we place as item number one, the security safety plan, which I just handed out to everybody. Any other changes before we proceed? Okay, we have the agenda with those changes, the motion to approve. Motion at the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Have known that signed up on our signing sheet this evening, so we'll move on to our discussion items. The first one is regarding the security safety plan. And we have Mr. Deputy Williams with us this evening to kind of tell us a little bit about this. He's been working hard on getting the information together for a checklist of things that need to be completed to comply with the state rules. We've had the inspection done on the equipment, and he can tell more about that in just a moment. And we also need to approve this, which is kind of as understanding one of the last things we need to do to get this plan together. Is that correct?
The plan is the, it's kind of like the long pole in the tent right now to keep everything in, on schedule so that we can get the application down from Montgomery, a request and registration of the equipment, say. The plan, it addresses what we do as far as the radiation safety. It's not the security plan. Please don't get that confused. The security plan is non, it's, it covers everything. This deals with radiation safety itself. And if you remember the presentation that I provided earlier, last month as a matter of fact, the, this, and my mental picture of this thing is that this would occupy a section of the overall plan at some point in time in the future. But this is, the plan is a requirement from, out of the Radiation Control Office in Montgomery. And in essence, we're trying to comply with those, with those dictates. Did you want to cover anything, or just let's go through that?
If you would mention the survey that was taken also, and the inspection that was done.
We appoint security here today. They conducted the survey and the radiation testing of all machines. We got reports that, they all passed, by the way. The machines are working good. The, he did make a comment about the machine in the north door. Once again, that's not a very good machine. But with the, that, with the images that it actually provides, the operation of the equipment, as well as the safety verification of the radiation safety aspects of the machine are good. And we got reports that, that, those copies of those reports that go into the application that they go to Montgomery.
So this is, this is one of the last things we need to get that application in to Montgomery.
Right here, this actually tells Montgomery how we're running our radiation safety program. To summarize, the big issue right here is, within the plan, there are, it says how we will train our people. I've talked to the representative down there, and he was willing to accept the fact, having our people read the operator's manual as training, and I took it upon myself to enter into the plan to document that fact on pages and become part of the documentation that's alluded to in the, in the direction we receive from Montgomery. The other part of it is assigning a radiation safety officer. That's something I think that the sheriff and the chief will have to make a determination of at some point in time. But there's a, if you look at the back, there's a page for the actual assignment of that, and that would become part of the documentation and would further be forwarded to Montgomery.
Any questions or comments on this? I'd like if everyone could take the time to review this next week. Do you have any questions? Sure, Mr. Williams, if you'd like to answer anything, and if there's anything I can answer next week on this. And then if we can vote on it next week, and if we have any issues, then we can go about it as we need to. But if you will review this, I'd like to put it on the agenda for next week.
How often is this conducted?
How often do we have?
Radiation exposure levels.
How often?
They, the, what was accomplished today is the initial survey and the initial testing. Actually, that should have been done by the instruction thirty days prior to ever. Said they didn't use that to begin, but that was all. The, it passed today, that's the initial survey. My recommendation within this plan is to do it every two years. Now, in the, the instruction that we get from Montgomery, it says that it'll be no longer than every year. The representative down there, Mr. Tullerville, said that they would accept something outside the parameters of that for this type of equipment that we've got right here. So two years is what I'm proposing in the plan anyway.
Even though your exposure limits are limited, this is small amounts, you don't see that the people need to be tested for radiation exposure now, is this correct?
No. In the reading, and I asked the representative from Point Security that, and once again, he verified to me that the exposure level is very, very low. It's a very small amount. And to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, the federal statute says that it has to be within point five miller ranking. To, anything over point five miller ranking, you can't use the equipment, or it has to go into another category. Today, the exposure levels are in the point oh one range. So you see the difference? The highest, the highest reading that was, that he measured today was point oh four, and that was on the south door piece of equipment, and it was at the exit ramp of the piece of equipment where the screen is. But the operator sitting in front of it is still farther, in the first place, it's not enough, not enough radiation to be worried about, but the operator's still far enough away that it's even less of a concern. And there's, and there's lead shielding on the side of the, of the machine to prevent the, any, the public at large from being radiated of any, pretty.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? If you're in favor, we will take a look at that, and if, if there's an objection, we'll place that on the agenda for next Monday night to discuss and hopefully move forward. Next item regarding Jackson County School Resource Officer, Mr. Carissa Walker.
I just want to talk to you briefly for a few minutes about SROs in our schools and how, what we need to do to get those. I mean, we all know, it seems like every few days we hear of a tragic incident happen around this country in our schools. We are actually very fortunate in the Bridgeport and the Jackson area where I'm from, that our law enforcement is able to just pop in since the Sandy Hook Elementary tragedy. They do pop in periodically at different times, unscheduled times, and they do walkthroughs, you know, and things like that, and that's helpful, and we appreciate that. We appreciate the Sheriff's Department doing all the campaigning for us. We've seen a lot of presence in our schools, but the thing is, you can't tell me an ongoing officer in that school, you know, couldn't make a difference. It would. They would be able to provide ongoing security. Not only they would be able to interact with the students, you know, and find out what's going on in their homes, get to know the students, and what to be kind of looking for, those who might be a little more problematic. It's just, it's just, it's a situation where this really needs to be put as a priority in our system. And I know I've got letter, I've got a couple of letters I actually want to read to you from a couple of principals in Jackson County supporting this. We get a lot of great support from the superintendent. Everybody seems to want this, and I know y'all do too, but we need to make it happen. I know they're probably aware DeKalb County has recently just been able to get the funding for SRO officers in their, in their school. Now, what they did, they go look creative, and they collaborated with the Sheriff's Department and the school board. They actually half the cost. They, they each pay half, and according to the DeKalb County CFO, they are billed monthly for their half. So they have actually made it happen. There were no grants involved. They just kind of got creative and found a way to make it happen, and they have eight SRO officers in their schools. Also, just last Friday, a release came out from the law administration stating that they were releasing a hundred twenty-five million dollars from the Department of Justice System just for SRO officers. So maybe, you know, it's, it's opportunity for us to be able to tap into some of those dollars. I don't know if we'd be eligible or what, but, but my issue is, this needs to be a priority, and I know we all agree with that. You know, I'm not saying I'm getting any opposition here, but we've got to be able to fund the funding. DeKalb County, Marshall County, and all these other counties can do it. I certainly think Jackson County should be able to do it as well. You know, we don't want, what we don't want to do is for something to happen, and then we have to come back here and talk about this again. I'll give you a good example, a little bit too little, too late. Sixteen years ago next month, I lost my nephew. There's a real pretty turning point in front of Jackson, you know, North Jackson High School right now, and they got the flashing lights going on when the school comes in and when it lets out. Well, sixteen years ago next month, those, that wasn't in place. And my nephew was just turning into school, trying to go to school, and was run over and killed. We don't want a tragedy to happen here in Jackson County of any kind, and that's just an example. Let's not wait till something happens. I mean, we've got the signs, this world is in turmoil, and our kids are having problems, and they're bringing those problems to school, and our children deserve to be able to come to schools in Jackson County and get the education they need in a safe environment. They need to be able to feel safe. And will SRO officers cure everything and assure our children to be hundred percent safe? No. We're not saying that, and we're being realistic there, but you can't tell me it won't make a difference. And I just really strongly encourage y'all, please, let's find a way here. I'm gonna read you two letters if I may. One letter is from North End Mountain School Principal, Mr. Chris Wright. I am writing to you to request assistance in the funding of school resource officers. We all have seen countless world events that have taken place in the last several years that have claimed the lives of schoolchildren and personnel. The world we live in today seems to be out of control. In schools today, the number one task we have is to keep our students and faculty safe. Currently, we have a buzzer system, entry system, that allow entry into the school building, and we keep all other exterior doors locked. We all have camera systems so that we can monitor the interior and exterior of our campuses. We train our faculty into being observant about student behavior, and we train our students to report anything they hear as being suspicious. At Sandy Hook Elementary, they did all of these same things. Our school buildings were never designed to be fortresses. The number one factor that can deter the possibility of someone coming in from outside and causing harm in the, is the presence of a school resource officer. Sheriff Chuck Phillips and deputy, Chief Deputy Rocky Harmon do an excellent job of allowing officers to school, to stop in the schools periodically and walk around. However, this is not enough police presence in my community. I am the only high school in the county without a city police officer. If a situation was to arise here, we are on our own for at least twenty-five minutes. For this reason, I fully support the reinstatement of school resource officers, and I hope the county commission can see this as a top priority as we all try to keep safe the future leaders of our community. That is from Mr. Chris Davis, Principal, North End Mountain. The next letter is from Sam Houston, Principal of North Jackson High School. Dear Commissioners, I am writing this letter on behalf of the community of North Jackson and the schools affiliated with this area. We currently have five schools in the area. We currently have zero school resource officers. We have not had SROs for quite some time now. We feel in the day and time in which we live, SROs are a much-needed resource. We currently have approximately four hundred seventy-five students in grade, grades nine through twelve. Situations sometimes occur where police officers are needed. We are fortunate at North Jackson High School to have great support from our local police department. However, if a real emergency occurs, the reaction time would be minimized. As an administrator, we would very much like to see the implementation of SROs back into the school. Our future is centered, is certainly centered on our youth. Our focus needs to be placed on the safety and well-being of our schools and children to provide the best opportunity for our students to be successful. With the existence of SROs in our schools, we would be able to provide a safe and effective learning environment conducive to learning. If ever time existed for a need for SROs, it is now. Sam Houston, Principal of North Jackson High School. So again, I just appreciate you letting me come here, and like I said, you know, with our neighboring counties being able to do this, and I understand any time you try to get anything done, and improvement, money is the issue, but it seems like now is the time, and perhaps maybe with the money, the federal dollars coming down, maybe we can tap into some of that.
We did apply for SRO grants, and we were turned down on that, is that correct?
Sixty-three counties applied in Alabama. We came in twenty-third, and they only, top six got money.
And DeKalb County, now their, their funding is not from a grant either.
Right. When did you say the additional funding was announced?
Friday. It was in the press release.
Okay.
From the Department of Justice.
That's something we'll definitely look at as well. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is regarding using a sick leave toward their years of service. Kevin, Justin and I had a conversation today with a gentleman down at the state level to give us a kind of an understanding of this little letter as we presented before. And it does work similar to how we had discussed before. If we were to allow employees to use sick leave toward their years of service, they would be, be allowed to use whatever our cap was. I think currently our cap is twelve hundred dollars, is that right? Towards, towards retirement, or towards their years of service. So if they were here thirty years and wanted to put that extra seven months in, they could. As opposed to taking that money out. Currently, we pay half of that, up to half of that, but maybe six hours or six weeks. So we had, we talked about some different ideas in looking at this. I think the benefit of looking at something like this would be, even if, if we could arrange the numbers correctly, someone that had been here even thirty years, that utilized this would save us a couple of years perhaps on paying additional amount, and we'd get a lower salary in that person, so we may get a little bit earlier retirement or something like that. So it's something we need to look at. Any questions or comments? You have anything to add to it, Mr. Guthrie? Currently, if we were to adopt it strictly on the policies we have in place right now, I think it would come up to seven months. A person that was here twenty-four years and five months would be able to leave at that point in time. We would not be out the sick leave, and we would also not be out that seven months of pay. We don't pay them for the sick leave when they, if they use that towards their years of service. Yes, sir?
So that means if someone does that, I don't have to wait seven months to replace them?
Right. You can replace them immediately. Any other questions or comments? Is something we want to pursue? If it is, I can get together a proposal, you know, just, we can discuss proposal on how to move forward with this. I'd like to see that we raise our cap if we do this, to allow someone to use more time for sick leave while keeping our cap at the six hundred hours for payout. That would give it incentive, if someone did want to use it, give more incentive to use this years of service as opposed to taking the sick leave time, getting the payout.
I personally, I'd like to. I think it's a good idea. I've talked to the gentleman in state. You know, we want to make sure we, we help our employees, and I think we found a way that we can help, help employees as they already retire, and on the same hand, reduce our costs. Well, that's what we're trying to do. We don't, we want to make sure we really help the employees we help, but reduce our costs as a way of, yeah, how do we?
Yeah. Like the sheriff mentioned, I know many times, long-term employees that are ready to retire have actually retired, but that position couldn't be filled until those months went by, and that pandered up the sheriff's office.
And in that case, if someone, whether, you know, I don't know how that may have worked, did they actually use their sick leave to stay away for that number of months, or how did they do?
Well, if they retired, they would get half their sick leave paid. And then they had a bunch of annual time if they.
Oh, they would use that.
They would be using that too, and then that money was already figured in the budget, so it's being paid out to them.
Right.
And we had to wait till that money stopped going out before we could hire someone.
Yeah. This would, this would, on the sick leave part, that would still be the discretion, I think, of the department to use all that annual time at the end, but as far as the sick leave part, that would give them the incentives to use this instead of their annual time to finish off that term.
Personally, I think it's a good idea because you're really hurting the good employees by them losing six hundred hours, the people that don't lay out sick or call in sick all the time.
Right.
You know, the, the good employees are the ones that build that twelve hundred hours.
Right.
What happens with their annual leave?
The annual leave gets paid out when they retire.
In lump sum? Yeah, that way. Mr. Chairman, would you explain what you were talking about raising the cap again?
I would recommend if we do move forward with this raising the cap, currently the cap's at twelve hundred as far as, that's as much as an employee can accrue during their time of service here. At that point, it falls off, they lose whatever goes beyond. If we raise that cap to twenty-four hours or thirty-six hours, that raises the amount of time that they can, you know, put towards their years of service, but it doesn't cost us anything more if they choose to get the payout, if we leave the payout at six hundred hours. So they get the benefit if they want to take the six hundred hours payout, they can take that, or they can take twenty-four or thirty-six hundred hours towards their, towards their years of service if they choose. Right now, it's a, basically, we've got to set it at twelve hundred hours or six hundred, you know, half, half of that's payout, six hundred. I would recommend we leave the six hundred as the payout, and then raise the total amount. That way individuals have that option.
They take it a five to one retirement.
Right.
They not collect the four.
Correct.
So it wouldn't be hurting, there'd still be, nothing would be changed as far as their total amount collected.
Wouldn't hurt their monthly check.
Right.
Because they wasn't paying in for that length of time?
Right. So, but if they, wrong, but if they built up that time, they could go ahead and retire early. You know, like you said, the good employees, if they didn't miss, they could build up that time and go around, and we could replace them with the employee at a lower rate if you count the same county money.
You look at it going from twelve hundred hours to what?
We, we would need to determine what the amount. I would recommend maybe even considering something that would get them up to two years, allowing employees to put two years toward their years of service. And again, as far as cost, it doesn't cost the county. If anything, it costs us pennies on our, our insurance side of it, but unless we have exodus of folks to use this, you know, at one time, we're not going to see any, any real cost on that, so it's just going to save us from what we pay out. We calculated on an average employee pay, and of course, the ones that were retired are going to be, not average, going to be much higher, but average, we would save about ten thousand per employee, so I, I can see a saving, a lot more than that.
Changing to twenty-four, to twenty-four hundred is unless we had, according to the gentleman from state, unless we had people retired one time. So, you know, in our county being small, we're, we're never going to have that decision one time, but.
Changing from twelve hundred hours to twenty-four hundred hours.
Yeah.
Is not going to affect us, and I'm like.
You gotta, you gotta understand what we're talking about is if they apply that to retiring early.
I, I understand, but they're going to be paid for that amount of time.
They don't get paid.
No, they don't get paid.
They're not going to pay them?
If you use.
Just going to let them apply the years.
If you use the sick leave toward your years of service, you, with the county does not pay any dollars for that sick leave. They get, the state, the law that was passed says that they can use that. They don't be compensated for it, but they can use that to add it to their years of service as if they.
Then now, if you bank the retirement system is in agreement with that.
Yes, this is how.
Right now, you bank twelve hundred hours, you have to use it, lose its vitality, and this, this, let them bank more hours.
The employee still has the option. They can still take the six hundred, nothing's changing, they can still take the payout for lump sum money.
But if they choose to do this, they do not get to receive the six hundred dollars to grab.
Correct. They can't, they can't take both. They have to take one.
Or the other, you can't split it up.
What happens to the people who have aged, each one as far as, you know, their time age?
That would be, again, that's their, that's, for each individual, they have to take into account what's going to be best for them to take the payment or to take the year.
Sure. There's nothing changing as far as the employee, there's no employee that will lose any of that. The only thing, the only thing is, they can, if we change it to twenty-four, they can gain twelve months, retiring twelve months earlier than they would, or if they want some money, they still get the six hundred hours.
Well, depends on how old you are.
No.
Yes, it will. I mean, to use that twenty-four hundred hours to your benefit will depend on your age.
Right.
You know, years of service, even though you're still going to be benefiting a select group of people, not everybody.
And that's for those individuals to choose whether they're going to have it or not.
Okay.
Like, right now, there is no option to take the money. This will give some, some folks, not, it won't be the best for everyone, and the faculty gentleman we talked to said it wouldn't benefit him, but for some folks would have that option.
Some folks would have the option.
Right. They still have the option.
There's some folks who have the benefit, everyone will have the option.
Right. Some folks, that's what I was trying to wrap my mind around, it's not going to benefit just anybody that's getting ready for years of service to, to render. I mean, that's, it depends on how old they are.
Right.
Or whether there's a benefit or not.
Any other questions or comments? If there's no opposition, I'd like to get a resolution together, work with Mr. Porter, get a resolution together. I'd like to see two years on that. If, if there's not an individual who can change that, or if not, we can discuss that at the next work session, and I'd like to see about putting up to two years, which I think will come up with the hours on that.
I agree, I would like to. Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay. So I'll, if, if there's no opposition, I'll get something together on that, we'll put that at the next work session for discussion, and hopefully, Mr. Porter will come back.
I, I personally am not opposed to it, but I would like to discuss the two-year amount.
Okay. We'll get a general resolution together, we can input at the time of the order. All right. Anything else on that? Questions or comments? Okay. That can, let's see, you have.
Let me, let me say one more thing before I get this clear. If, if we do, if we went with the twenty-four hundred dollars, and a person's age is not going to benefit them for taking that, and they take the six hundred payout, we're still not, you know, we're not getting where we want to be as far as money goes, because the age of these employees, look at the age of these employees. They start here when they're eighteen years old, get twenty-five years in, you know what I mean, eighteen, twenty. You really need to look at the age of your employees to see if it's really going to be a benefit, or if it's just going to help five or six people.
Well, it's, it's, it's a law, I mean, we're kind of confined to what we can do.
You're saying it's the way that's going to benefit us or not? I think, I mean, if we get, if, if one employee takes it, that's ten thousand dollars we didn't have to spend.
It's not going to be a huge savings, but I mean, there's potential if you have two or three in one year, it takes it to have a thirty thousand dollar that year.
I think it's great anything you do to help people, but I think we need to look a little bit more into this and see how we can help the majority. I, I believe your age is going to be a majority of. I believe your age is going to be a majority of county employees.
And we did ask about moving out of parameters, we're kind of stuck right there according to law.
You're not, you're not saying to make, to modify this to make it more worthwhile for folks, are you?
I'm not, I'm not sure what I'm saying. I'm thinking out loud really is what I'm doing. Or are you thinking of an age up, eligibility? That's what, that's my main concern.
And that we couldn't, we couldn't do.
If you done that two years, it would take a person twenty-five years not taking any sick time to ever get that built.
Right.
I mean, if you've got older person in, if that's what you're thinking, thirty-five or forty-year-old, they're never going to build that.
They'll never build it.
They're never, never going to build that because it's four hours.
Right, and that's up to that amount. That would mean that anyone, and, and another benefit here, the reason I would say we've been raising it is someone that's been here for even maybe thirty years. Right now, if we left it the way it is, the motivation definitely would be to take the six hundred hours. If we increase that amount, it gives them something to think about as far as taking it. The longer they've been here, obviously, the less it benefits them, but by raising that cap, it gives them a little more incentive to say this actually benefits them more, you know, the longer I'm going to make more by taking this, by taking this.
Yeah, basically, it's just another, we're just giving another option, giving, you know, one more option, that potentially helps the county and help some employees. Some it won't, some employees will be better off, like the gentleman we got, he said, you know, if they actually retire and take him the twenty-four months, like they done, so it ain't going to help him, he wants the six hundred, but it's just a prayer.
And you're thinking you're going to save ten thousand per employee by them not being deployed during that twenty-four month period, what are you saying?
You'll actually save more. If, if an employee takes this, that's making, you know, again, it's going to be a higher end of the range, you'll save, you'll save that from the payout of the sick leave, we don't have to pay out that sick leave. They're probably, if they choose to do this, they're going to get more retired in the long run, and then we also save from bringing in lower-cost employees. So, it gives them more incentive to take that, it's better for them in the long run. If someone wants the money at that point, they can take it at that point, but if they want to look at the, you know, the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, if they're looking at that, then they want to take the, the years of service option, and then, of course, if they do, they save us on both sides. Ten thousand just on the hourly rate, that was at a low hourly rate, you know, for twenty-five years of service, we also save on that, the hourly rate because of things that we're Something to keep, keep in mind, we'll bring it back up to the next work session, and we have a discussion we have to keep talking about.
We will save on the ten thousand, real quick, I don't know when, I think about this, you will save, but if you immediately replace that person the next day, you know, your savings is not going to be what, what you're thinking really, I'll be honest with you. This is going to be just pretty much a benefit to employees, give them an option to use that time because the savings is not- The savings too will come at hiring an entry-level employee as compared to a veteran employee. Right. With that veteran, you're only going to pay them six hundred hours, the new employee-
But you're still-
You know, you're fixing, paying forty hours a week. The savings, I just don't, I don't think the savings is there, if you're doing it for that reason.
Mr. Chairman, what it is, maybe if you can get together some numbers, because Mr. Rogers was sitting there probably yesterday-
Sure.
And I think we kind of, you know, maybe it was better, right, here, if we're saying, maybe Mr. Rogers sit down and kind of show-
Maybe I'm not thinking, please, I understand.
I'm trying to get some numbers together and how we, we were explaining, of course, we can get on the phone with him also again, too, and then look at that, and that's something.
So, it's a benefit for the employees, no cost, of course, I'm going to report, but I just don't, I don't follow the funding behind it.
Do you have any questions or comments this time on? We'll get back together, and I'll get something to you, Mr. Porter. All right, move on to our next item regarding nonpartisan county elections that have been brought up, wanted to discuss, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, Mr. Porter, I'd like to do a resolution to make all county-wide races nonpartisan. I think it's something that's going to help our community, and they are monetary savings also. You know, we're looking at ways to, to save the county money. This would be one, one good way of helping the community, and saving the county money as a-
Any questions or comments? I think currently we have three elections a year, so there's one cost savings in that cutting it down to two. If we were to choose, of course, there'd be a lot of discussion, and I guess, if, if we were to present something to the legislature regarding this, would we need to kind of specify how it would set up, would work on that?
I think so. So, you could make that recommendation, and you put that in your request in the resolution.
Okay.
Or in the general election, like, everybody running for district two on both tickets, and everybody would get the opportunity to vote for-
Right.
You know, a lot of times the way we go now is if, if this person wants to vote for this guy district one, this guy district two, if they're in two parties, they can't do it, they have to stay in one party. In order to be where you, you know, you should ever vote for a year that you want to vote for in each district or each race.
And that would be just the county, county, if we bid commission, share, probate, revenue, just county offices, right?
Yes, just county offices.
It would exclude judges and sort of crew.
Right. Those would be- Any questions or comments on that, any other questions or comments? Mr. Porter, we put something together, and I guess, I'll give you, kind of see what details we want, and we'll bring that to the next work session, also present, have a resolution for the session, next work session.
Can we, we put that in the next work session, probably in prison?
Oh, for that, okay. Put that in the first work session in, what month, November? Okay. I don't get a point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Porter.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. That concludes the regular discussion items. There's a request this evening to go into executive session to discuss a good name and character of an employee. In order to do that, we will have to have a motion in a second, so we'll first take that, entertain a motion to go into executive session for that purpose. Motion, we have a second.
Sure.
Okay. And, Mr. Porter, this is longer, the way it needs to be done, is that correct?
To discuss the good name and character of an employee or of an individual is an Acceptance of Open Meetings Act, and Porter can go into executive session for that purpose, the commissioner.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor to go into executive session, say aye. As opposed, say no. I'd ask that the commission and Mr. Porter go back here and agree to that. We'll entertain a motion to enter back into regular session. Motion, we have a second.
Sure.
Okay. We've discussed on that motion. All in favor, say aye. As opposed, say no. That concludes the items on our agenda, and takes care of our request for executive session. Move on to our reports. Mr. Manning? Okay. Mr. Whitebeard?
Well, I want to make y'all aware, and I've already told the chairman and Mr. Reddwood, we got our TBA permit today for the Estrel Fort project. We've got the Army Corps and the TBA, so that's all took care of, and we actually put in an order for materials and stuff today, so hopefully we'll be able to start on that, maybe next week. That might be a little, a little early, but we're hoping to next week, and as y'all know, we're probably already about two or three weeks behind from waiting on that permit, but just want to let you, make y'all aware of that.
Mr. Porter? Chair? Mr. Gethin?
Mr. Biss?
Mr. White?
Mr. Nelson.
That concludes the items for work session this evening. Next week's meeting will be on Tuesday due to the holiday on Monday, so if you're trying to entertain a motion to adjourn, motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Put the notice out.